Take it. Take it, Kevin's up there. All right. There he is. Shall we applaud?
Don't let the sound there start.
Okay.
Stand back up.
Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. This is now 7:07 and it is time for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Beloit City Council at 100 State Street, Beloit, Wisconsin. Today is Monday, November 5th, 2012. Item number one.
Roll call shows all councilors present.
Item number two, pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item number three, special orders of the day and announcements. There are none, nor are there any public hearings under item number four. So we'll move on to number five, citizens' participation. This is the point of the agenda where citizens have the right, have the ability to speak to council about issues that are coming before us or may come before us in the future. Council members may not act on any requests at this meeting, but may refer a speaker to staff for assistance. We ask that you hold your comments to three minutes or less and refrain from personal attacks of any kind. I only have one sheet today, and that's from Mr. Mike Zorl. Please approach the podium and give your name and address.
Mike Zorl, 1756 Carwell. Imagine being an accident victim and getting a bill even though you didn't use an ambulance or call for help in an amount that exceeds 50 percent of your annual property taxes. Despite being banned by 13 states and counting, the Beloit City Council is considering the crash tax, which is the fee charged to drivers involved in a collision where the police and fire department respond to clean up or rescue people. Public safety is a basic role of the local government and currently represents 62 percent of Beloit's budget. If we have to pay a crash tax, then what are our property taxes for? What about the gas taxes, the motor vehicle registration fees, the Beloit wheel tax, and traffic citations the government already collects? At least property taxes can be deducted from federal income taxes, and state law limits the annual increases. You cannot deduct the crash tax from your federal income tax, and the Beloit City Council has no ceiling on how fast or how high they can increase the fees. Auto insurance usually covers reasonable expenses incurred for necessary medical and funeral services sustained by individuals in an accident, but it may not cover public safety responses. So who's going to be paying the fee? Everybody. Most automobile insurance policies do not provide coverage for these fees. For the ones that do, insurance premiums will go out for everybody that has car insurance, even if they're never involved in an auto accident. What happens when an insurer refuses to pay, as with most of the cases? Struggling Beloit residents will be sent to a collections agency and potentially have their credit scores ruined if they don't want to or cannot afford to pay. How's this crash tax working in other cities? Well, in Petaluma, California, the total revenue collected was only $14,000, but it expected $100,000, exactly like the city of Beloit expects, $100,000. They only got 14. In Roseville, it repealed its crash tax. City manager Ray Carriage says it just wasn't worth the bother. We were expecting something like $200,000, and we actually got about $40,000, he says. Reddner Township, Pennsylvania dropped its practice for billing for police services and refunded nearly $47,000 it had collected after their program received many complaints and bad publicity. In Florida Tampa and the town of Davie, both dropped proposals after the public expressed outrage. Do we really want our firefighters bogged down with excessive paperwork at all auto collision scenes, collecting billing and insurance information? Or do we want them to do the jobs taxpayers expect them to do? What happens if it's your house on fire and you have a family member die because the fire department was a few minutes too slow filling out paperwork only a few miles away? Undoubtedly, Beloit's police and fire services are necessary and invaluable to our safety. As part of their duties for which they are already getting paid, the public is grateful that first responders can be called on to investigate and assist in auto crashes. However, the model of these officials should be to serve and protect, not serve and collect.
Thank you. Do we have any other persons wishing to speak under item five? Third and final call for all persons wishing to speak under items five for citizen participation. Ms. Moore, please approach the podium, state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Kim Moore, and my address is 1822 Sun Valley Drive, and I want to talk about the crash tax as well. We're already paying for that with our property taxes, so you're looking to double bill the citizens for a service that we're already paying for. I think you tried something similar with the snow removal, and that caused an outcry with the people. So I'm against it, and I hope you will not pass it. Thanks.
Right. Third and final call for persons to speak on item five. Hearing none, close citizen participation, and move forward to the consent agenda. Item six. All items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member still requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point in the agenda. Does any councillor wish anything removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none.
Motion for approval.
Approved.
Second.
Moved by Lukey, second by Levy. Items six A through six C. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes seven zero. Item seven, ordinances.
A proposed ordinance to amend section 6.19 of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit as it relates to the fees for the fire department services.
Good evening, City Council President, City Councilor, City Manager Arft. This evening I bring for you an ordinance change regarding fees for the fire department and services that we provide. During 2012 and 2013, the municipal operating budget process, I was encouraged by the City Council membership, City Manager Arft and my department membership, to seek out forms of revenue that could help us restore the department to its 2011 operating capacity. The fire department was charging residents and non-residents for services rendered during hazardous materials incidents and special rescue situations, requiring only highly technical or other, for many years, highly technical response for many years. The city is allowed to recoup costs from spillers through the United States Code, Title III. The department implemented an extrication fee for vehicle machinery, high-angle trench rescue, building collapse, rescue services, all encompassed under the extrication rescue fees. Also, incident command was included as a response cost to both of these services. The current billing responsibility lies in the risk manager's office. At this time, at the time of this report, I didn't have collection numbers for you. Since that point in time, I was able to do some research over the last two years. In 2011, we had a collection rate of 47 percent of our billables, and of those, we had seven of those accounts go to non-resident, or, excuse me, go to trip. The rest were all collected through billings that we sent to the individual and/or their insurance company. About half of our folks that we send these fees to are non-resident, half are resident. Last year, in 2011, we had one resident business and one non-resident business also. There were a total of around 18 accounts that were billed out in last, in 2011. In 2012, so far this year, we've had seven, eight, excuse me, eight responses that resulted in these billings. So far, the collection rate shows about 57 percent in the city budget. None of those have obviously gone to trip because we haven't concluded the year or collections, and of those folks, there are eight residents, excuse me, there are eight billings, there are four residents, two non-resident businesses, and three, trying to count them all to make sure I have them all right, three or two, two other non-resident resident customers, citizen customers. So there were four residents, two non-resident businesses, and two non-residents. So that's what we have so far for this year. If you remember, I'll refer to it later in the report of what our historical collectibles would be, have been, and I'll explain the differences in those when I get there. In our research and networking with other departments and consultation with our ambulance billing company, we contacted special matter, subject matter experts at the company of named Fire Rescue USA. They provided us with information on usual and customary charges and what their professional experience has been in collecting on behalf of fire departments. The list of fees they were charging closely matched what we were charging. The council heard their presentation on Monday, October 29th, 2012. Based on the recommendation of vendor, we reconfigured our fees to include those usual and customary charges in the format that was presented to you at the meeting. We did this to capture untapped sources of revenue through the vendor's experience expecting 75 percent billable revenue. Those untapped resources include a basic fee for motor vehicle incidents, a tiered fee structure for more complicated motor vehicle responses, including car fires. This is also a tiered, there is also a tiered fee structure for special rescue, hazardous materials response, which we've all previously charged for. We also tapped a fire water, fire, a fee for water pipeline breaks, didn't catch that typo, fire investig, and fire investigation. We do not currently charge for either of those or for fires. We did not, we, on your recommendation from our 29th meeting, we excluded charging for fires. We included a fee for fire investigation in February of 2012, the Wisconsin became a Dalbert State. This requires that anyone conducting fire investigation testify for an arson or fire origin, cause, fired, a cause and origin trial must be an expert witness. The only expert witness in Rock County is employed by the Beloit Fire Department. The training investment to build this resource is very expensive. The liability to the city of Beloit is tremendous for improper investigation. Could be an exorbitant cost to us. Therefore, we believe that it was prudent to bring that charge forward. Now, I understand that you're going to reconsider that later on in the resolution and in the ordinance. Just for your information, we do investigate about 115 fires a year. That's about one every three days, and the time it takes to investigate those fires may be from five minutes to 15 to 20 hours. It just depends on the type and complexity of the fire, how much fire debris there is, how big the building is, what, whether we have witnesses or not. There's so many different factors that affect that, and so you just want to make sure that you have a good explanation of that. The rest of these fees are defined within the attached documentation. I do have to agree with Mr. Zorl in that the insurance industry is bulking at these charges. The discussions in peer groups and articles in trade magazines indicate that the insurance industry is seeking legislation to allow these fees. If I had something to compare this program to, it would be the insurance industry itself. Taxes, our tax dollars are the base policy, and then these fees are the deductibles. The final component of this is the service provider. We will do an outs, a search for a provider to provide the billing services for us. We will go through a program, RFQ program, will be taking input from citizens and city councilors on these fees and how we will administer it. As far as key points, we're currently charging for these services. We're collecting revenue from internal and external customers and insurance companies and residents. We're not charging for fire response, and we will not charge for fire response. We were not going to charge for non-resident vehicle fire, or for, only for non-resident vehicle and trailer fires. In 1999, and the reason this is important from, from billing perspective, in 1999, the city moved from an amless billing in the treasurer's office. When we did that, we improved our collection rate from 25 percent to 65 percent. Using a collection fee, a collection, a service to collect these will result in increased revenue for the city and the department, which will also result in less need for tax revenue in the future. Alternate funding sources based in user fees are becoming the norm for recruiting operational costs for fire departments. United States Fire Administration under President Bush recommended these fees as an option to reduce the burden of these cost centers on expanding mission of the fire service and on the taxpayer. Our subject matter expert is a national client list of 320 clients, 29 in Illinois and two in Wisconsin. It's a, it's a budding market here. There are many other departments in the, in the, in the state that charge for these fees. I had intended to have a survey for you today, but I did not get the survey results from who I asked them for. I can get those to you at a later date. We will be selecting a vendor from the competitive bid process. This has, this is compliant with our city goal number one, and this has nothing to do with any of our fossil fuels or anything like that. The city's budget impact, this is one of the things I wanted to point out. In 2009, we had $31,000 of revenue. In 2010, we had $44,000 of revenue. In 2011, we had $17,000 of revenue. What happened in, in 2011, with such a dramatic drop, in the, our audit of how we were booking this revenue, we discovered that we weren't doing it in accrual accounting, the way it needs to be done from a municipal perspective. So all of our previous revenue that was uncollectible was booked on the 2011 books, and that drove our revenue numbers down. We actually collected more cash than the 17854, but because we had so many accounts out there that were not collected as a result of previous billings, that drove our numbers down. And we're projecting $28,000 for this year. Our vendor initially projected $100,000 in total revenue. Basically, removing structure fires and resident vehicle fires, we, we're looking at possibly $68,000 in revenue for next year. If you take out the, the fire investigation fee when you make your vote, I would expect that to drop another $20,000. So we would probably be in the $48,000 range. Do you have any questions for me? I know that Councillor Spicer wanted me to review each of the fees and go through them. Do you, can you make quick to the fee resolution, and I can go through those?
You'd like to talk about the fee resolution now, or I'd prefer that we?
I don't have a report during the fee resolution, unless you'd like me to come back to the podium.
I would prefer, yeah, I think I would prefer to keep things in their place and discuss it at that time. And, and as far as questions, I think first we'd like to get it to the floor first. Do I have a motion for approval?
Move.
Moved by Levy.
Mr. President, I thought the agenda seemed to indicate that we got to have a waiver of rules for a second.
Oh, okay, well, you, thank you for correcting me, so.
Sorry.
No, that's quite correct.
My motion still stands for that one.
Okay. Move for suspension of the rules. Have a second. Second by Kincaid. Any discussion on suspension of the rules?
I guess my question would be, Mr. President, why, why do we need to suspend the rules? We're only talking about a maximum of $48,000 projected in 2013. Doesn't this merit more discussion perhaps, or two weeks of potential input from the public?
Can I get a question? Anyone else?
I think that's a fair point.
Okay.
I guess I'll follow up with you. But the chief or the city manager asks, is this a time-sensitive issue that we put it on here for a second to suspend the rules for a second reading? Is there a reason, an overall line, reason that we put it on here to suspend the rules and go right to the, to merits this evening? Or can we lay it over for further discussion? I guess that's, that's the question that I have.
Well, if I may answer that, Mr. President, certainly council can hold it over. The reason we put it on there is it had been discussed twice previously at budget workshop, and then again at a special meeting, and we were trying to synchronize it with an option of the budget, because one of the resolutions you're going to be considering in a few minutes will be to set all the fees. Normally, we wouldn't have the ordinance adopted before we establish the fees, but I suppose it, this doesn't go into effect till January 1st, so there would be time, if you want to do a first reading tonight, hold this for two weeks and act on it at the next meeting. We would go ahead with the fee resolution, because there's a lot of preparation, planning for the next budget cycle, and then if for some reason this isn't adopted, we could always, we'd have to come back and amend the fee resolution. So the reason it was on there for a second reading was just to synchronize it with the budget.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments before we vote?
Mr. Forrest, I want to.
Oh, thank you. Go ahead.
I'm just wondering, should we take advantage of Chief being here to ask some more questions? Because I have some more to give him time to work on.
Splendid business. This is the time to do it.
Okay. Thank you for working on getting some of the information I asked for in the workshop. Could you get that to us in writing? Because I heard some of it just now.
Sure.
But if you let it really sink in, that would be wonderful, especially in terms of residents versus non-residents and how much we're collecting now in terms of percentage. And then I am, I am wondering, we did talk a little bit in our workshop that you didn't think this would put much of a burden on firefighters for documentation, their documentation responsibilities. If you could provide more information about that, how much more it would entail, that would be helpful. And then I guess, I still, which I've raised before, concerns about how are we going to determine the at-fault party when the individuals don't have insurance? And I'm guessing that that will happen more than we'd like to admit. I guess I would feel better about having some better sense of direction about where we're heading with that, since I think it will affect quite a few people. And, and then finally, you know, I am glad that we're, we're looking at, at pulling fire investigative, investigation out of it, and I just heard you rattled off some numbers about how much you think that that would affect our, our revenue generation. I guess I'd like to see more of that, too.
Sure.
Thank you.
Starting, I'll make sure I get you everything you need in writing. Regarding the documentation, we still have to collect owner information and insurance information for all of our NIFRS reporting. So this is going, not, not going to affect us dramatically from, from that perspective. Most of that information we can gather from a officer that's on duty, because they have to collect that information also. So in that partnership on the scene, we can collect that. Regarding citizen comments and, and us taking the time to do that work versus responding to a fire, that's just not the reality. The reality of the situation is that the fire department and police department prioritize life-saving calls every day, and that if we are on a less critical call, we will leave that call and respond to the most critical call. And it happens every day. So in that situation, when, when that situation occurs, it'll be the responsibility of the officer to connect, the fire officer on the fire engine, to connect with that police officer again, and gather that information for the report. It takes an extra five minutes to put that information into the report once they have it. So as far as, you know, once, I'm sure there's going to be a learning curve at the beginning, just like when we go to a new ambulance reporting system or a new fire reporting system or something changes in our protocols or medical protocols, there's always a learning curve from a documentation perspective, and we deal with that just like we do everything else.
Thank you.
All right? And then as far as at-fault parties, that's something we're going to have to take, take care of through a policy process, developing a relationship with our vendor. We're going to ask those tough questions in the RFQ process and request our vendors to provide us information regarding how they deal with those situations, and then we will choose a vendor that we feel fits Beloit the best.
Councillor Van de Bogarde?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, a couple of questions, Chief, and then a couple of just general observations. I apologize, I did miss the workshop that was on the 29th, I believe, so perhaps I'm not as up to speed as I, I could be or should be. First of all, you indicated that in the last year, there were 115 fire investigations. Of those 115, how many individuals or how many fires did not have insurance?
Good question. I don't know.
All right. Another, another observation would be, I understand that what you're suggesting here is, in a sense, perhaps a shift. I mean, our taxes perhaps pay for the quote "standing army," and then as you have a user fee for if you use some of these services. I understand that concept, and I also understand a general thing that's been taking place in my view, certainly during my tenure on the council, and that is a general shift from taxes, bad, fees, user fees, good. And we are incentivized and capped by the state on taxes, but the fees are left open. And that's, makes some sense, in the sense that the people who use the stuff should pay for the stuff. But from what I understand you're saying here, basically, if we take out the fire investigation fee, if we take out the fee for responding to fires, we're back to almost where we are right now in terms of our billing for these events, and all we're doing is outsourcing the collection agency, is that, or collection process, rather. Is that a fair categorization of what the effect of this ordinance would be, just to outsource the collection aspect?
Well, we could outsource what we're doing now. There's no question about that, and it could, could improve what we're built, what we're getting. What I would say to the projection for our collections, it's very conservative. We're not planning on tying it into any expenditure in the fire department in the first year just so we can gather experience as to what the fees and the collection rates may be, based on the experience of the vendor and, and what they're actually able to collect. There has, our neighboring community, Janesville, enacted the same fees, but they only enacted those fees for non-residents, and so far this year, they've collected only about $14,000. That was an assessment back in mid-August, so they may have collected much more than that since then, but as of August, they hadn't collected more than $14,000. So I understand what you're saying. Why don't we just stay with what we have? That certainly is an option. Again, going back to my initial intent for the whole program, was to work towards a revenue source that would allow us to go back to our 2011 operational level. If our discovery here today and through more research says that it's not worth it, then that's up to the council, and I will abide by whatever your decision is.
Well, I, maybe, it's, to me, in a sense, I have some of the same caution or concern that Councillor De Forest has. I think we will be astounded in a negative way to find out how many individuals do not have car insurance. I know that it's a requirement of the law and that to have, you know, on and on, but I think we will be dumbfounded by the numbers of individuals that don't. And I also think the concept of fault and defining, defining fault and determining fault is, again, a sticky wicket that may make it difficult to recover monies as well. But having said that, I remain open to the concept, and perhaps I can be convinced, so.
Okay. Chief, I think I want one last piece of clarification. So in reality here, the only thing that we're looking at that's any different than what we're really doing today and, and functionally, is the non-resident automotive fire fee.
No, there's a, each of the fees has a tiered response. Right now, we charge- Right now, we charge, when we go to a car accident, and there's gasoline, or any kind of fluid, oil, anything on the ground, we charge, for every unit there, we charge so many dollars a minute. Just one second, I'll reference that for you. For a ladder company, we charge $12.33 a minute. For an engine company, we charge $8.23 a minute. For an ambulance crew, $8.23 a minute. For incident command, we charge $4.12 a minute. For heavy rescue, we charge $12.33 a minute. For a 50-pound oil dry, 50-pound bag of oil dry, we charge $13.55. And for our hazmat bags that we use to pick, clean up the mess, we charge $6.64 a bag. Those are hazmat fees. Our extrication fees are very, are identical, basically. We charge by the minute.
But we're charging that right now?
We're charging that right now.
Okay, so that's...
Right. We don't, we don't charge for that.
And how many, how many water pipeline calls do you have?
I don't have that off the top of my head. Those are hit and miss, you know? If we have a really cold winter, we might have three of them up at the Beloit Mall, or, excuse me, E Club Center.
The police don't call you to an accident unless there's spilled fluids, or unless there's a fire, correct?
Correct. That's a dispatch decision. It's based on what the dispatcher receives when they call in, when the person calls in. Person says, you know, the dispatcher asks, "Is your car drivable?" "Yes." "Is anybody hurt?" "No." They don't call the fire department.
So this is not a wholesale increase in the broadness of what we're, of what we charge for?
There is a, there is a base fee, that base, that level-one fee, which I'll talk about right now. For instance, motor vehicle level-one, that level-one fee is for a basic response to a motor vehicle accident. We respond, we provide scene safety, we provide fire protection for that scene to make sure that nobody gets hurt. And if there is a, there's always the possibility of some type of fire occurring in a fire, in a car accident. The percentage of car accidents that we have of fires is relatively low. But there is always a, you have electricity, you have gasoline, the possibility of a fire is high.
More, more likely.
When you damage that vehicle.
More likely you're going to see spilled colors.
So, you know, we provide that base service with that. Level-two, there's a more required of that particular call. And I have, if you see the description of those in your packet, and on the ordinance, there's descriptions in your packet, after my staff reported all of these fees. And under level-two, level-two includes incident one, or level-one, cleanup of materials, absorbents, hazardous fluids, cleanup disposal. We'll bill at this level if the fire department has to clean up any gasoline or other automotive fluids. Level-three is a car fire. Level-four is one and two, as well as a heavy extrication, like if we have to cut someone out of a car, or you do something like that, cut an animal out of a car, those types of things. Level-three includes one, two, and four, or, excuse me, level-five includes one, two, and four, including helicopter response. So if we go to a car accident where we have a helicopter response, level-five would be the one that we would use.
Okay. So, so I mean, but I mean, my point was, is that while we're reorganizing them and recategorizing the fees, you already started doing everything but the...
And under this one, the only thing we're not doing is the air care, is charging the air care.
Okay.
That is new.
All right, so that's all, that all falls into something we're doing, and I just wanted to clarify that, because it's not, this is nothing new.
Right.
Mr. President, could I please take us back up a little bit, and do the big picture again? And I appreciate all the detail. I think it's very helpful to understand how a lot of this stuff works. But let me quickly explain again. This started out as part of the initial budget process. The chief was bringing forward a number of charges for fire department services that are routinely charged by other departments in Wisconsin, as well as other departments around the country. During that review process and a subsequent workshop, that list was pared back, so that only a few of these things represented new or additional charges that are now in place. And one of the biggest ones here would be charging for car or trailer fires, and that would only be done to non-residents. And as you know, the intent here is to recapture some of our costs when we have to go out on the interstate highway, which occurs several times a year to deal with car fires, or trailer fires, or truck fires, or something of that nature. So this would be an opportunity to recover some of that cost from non-residents. Tonight, I would ask that you make this amendment this evening, if you pull fire investigations out of there, other than dealing with some of these pipeline calls and non-resident car fires, we're pretty close to where we are at the present time. But the importance, the importance of the ordinance is we are now restructuring our fees to meet what you would call the industry standard, okay? We're relisting these things in a way that was recommended by the billing service, because this allows them to apply their software and do the billing. And it also means that the insurance industry will recognize the codes on these charges, the same way your medical bills, when you go to the doctor, have to be coded a certain way. And if they're not, the insurance companies may misread those, or may misapply, or even reject your charge. So this particular ordinance is important, not that it adds a lot of fees, and as you heard, only a few residents each year are even impacted by these charges, but so that we can do this billing. And we definitely want to try the billing experience. We've had good success with that with other services. We'd like to try to gather as much revenue as we can from these particular billed charges. Last comment, again, I want to reiterate that what started out being maybe $100,000 revenue source, which could have added maybe one firefighter, is now down under $50,000, possibly under $45,000, as it is proposed. So the amount of revenue here that we're going to collect will be a minimal increase, if anything, over what's already being collected by the fire department for various specialty-type services that they currently provide, and have provided for a number of years. So I wanted to kind of refocus the discussion on a little more at the conceptual level of what we're doing, why the ordinance is important. And then I would ask council tonight to go ahead and make any amendments that you'd like to make in the ordinance, so we can have a clean copy on your agenda for your next meeting for final consideration.
That was exactly the point of the questions I was attempting to make, and that was where we were attempting to go. Counselor Spritzer, did you want to add anything?
No, I think I'm...
Okay. All right. Anything else, anybody else want to bring in? Okay. All right, so...
You have a motion on the...
Sure, sorry, there's no, none of the lights come up until somebody tells me.
I don't know if we have to deal with the motion on the floor.
You have a motion on the floor?
Yes, we have a motion on the floor to, for, to suspend the rules. And that was the, that was the motion to suspend, and we will have to deal with that before we can amend.
I'm waiting for you to do that.
Okay, so, that's right. That was, that was your question?
Yes.
Okay. So since we, our motion in the second was for suspending the rules, all in favor of suspending the rules, say aye. Aye? All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so the, the motion to suspend the rules fails two to five. All right, then.
I would like to make an amendment to the proposed ordinance that we remove fire investigations from the list of services that can be charged for.
Second.
Moved by, moved to amend by DeForest, second by...
Need an underlying motion personally.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Okay.
And a second, and then the motion to amend will be...
So the motion, the next motion will be for laying it over, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
It will be first meeting, and then it will be...
Sure. All right, then.
I'll make a motion that we lay this item over to our next scheduled city council meeting.
Okay. Moved by Levy?
Second.
Second by Spritzer, then.
Motion to amend is in order.
Okay, all right. Okay, thanks for the...
Mr. President, I would like to amend the proposed ordinance to remove fire investigations as a listed service that can be charged for the...
Second.
Okay, we have the motion to amend that language. Do you have that? Okay. All right. On favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? The amendment passes seven to zero. Now we have an underlying motion to lay over? You have a, okay. Counselor Vandenberg.
I believe there was some discussion about the potential for elimination of sub-paragraph E.
Resilience, yes, of course.
From the resolution, excuse me.
Okay, right, that'll be handled as we proceed.
Excuse me.
Okay. Anyone else have anything to say before I call for layover? All in favor of laying over, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item is laid over till the next meeting. Seven to zero. Thank you. Okay, item number eight is appointments. We have none. Number nine, counselor activities and upcoming events. Start with Counselor Vandenberg.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since our last meeting, I had the opportunity to attend the Wisconsin municipalities' fall meeting, along with Counselor Haynes, and, President Haynes, excuse me, and also city manager, Arft. I attended sessions on public funding, current trends, and successful strategies, another session on resolving local government issues, building civil discourse with leading-edge strategies, and a session on Act 10, a year later, court challenges. In addition, on the 23rd of October, along with counselors Lukey, DeForest, and council, rather, city manager, Arft, I attended the Urock Dean's Community Council in Janesville. Other activities, but they're so de minimis, has to not bore you with.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Counselor Levy?
Nothing.
Counselor Spritzer?
Want to remind everybody that tomorrow's election day, and encourage everybody to vote. Polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Counselor DeForest?
Thank you. I hope that doesn't mean that my lists get too boring. I would like to just congratulate Frieda Lay. They recently received a Clean Air Excellence Award from the US EPA. I'm so proud of what some of our local companies have done to be environmentally responsible, and just want to take my hats off to Frieda Lay for this fantastic award that's based on their efforts at the plants right here in Beloit. Thank you.
Counselor Lukey?
I too. Just want to remind all citizens to vote. This is a very important election for us nationally and locally, so vote often.
Counselor Kincaid?
Rather than that, I'll offer to drive anyone who needs a ride. I have nothing else.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm, thank you, everybody, for putting up with my raspy voice and, this evening. I am very gratified that we got through one of these discussions before an election, and no one mentioned, that, mentioned my margin of victory of my first election. So thank you very much. Okay. Now, item number 10, city's managers' presentation, there is none, so item 11, 11A.
A resolution approving the 2013 Community Development Block Grant Proposed Budget and Annual Action Plan. The Community Development Authority recommended approval, four to zero.
To maintain its eligibility for CDBG funding each year, the city is required to submit an annual action plan to HUD each year. This plan was contained in your packet tonight. It includes specific objectives for housing, homelessness, public housing, and community development. And it also includes information on the CDBG process, affordable housing, and special needs populations in the CDBG budget. This is really business, a business-as-usual plan. We do a five-year plan, where we outline what we're going to do for five years, and this really is just business-as-usual. We also went through a process to award funds to, for Community Development Block Grant. The CDA went through that process. We made applications available to agencies. We gave them the opportunity to make a presentation before CDA. And then the CDA did make their recommendation, which is included in your packet. And we went through at the last meeting, when you had your public hearing. All the projects recommended are consistent with the consolidated plan and the annual plan, and they're all eligible CDBG activities and meet one of the three national objectives. And we did put, publish a notice in the Beloit Daily News for the 30-day public review. And you did hear from Mark Perry from Community Action at your last meeting. And CDA did recommend approval of the plan and the budget, four to zero.
Motion to approve?
Move approval, Mr. President. Second.
Moved by Vandenberg, second by Lukey. Anyone wish to discuss this? Hearing none, call him, all in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Item passes six to zero. Now, item 11B.
A resolution approving the 2013 Home Investment Partnership Budget. The Community Development Authority recommended approval, four to zero.
Mrs. Christiansen?
The city of Beloit is a member of the Rock County Home Consortium. As part of that consortium, we are allowed to receive home funds directly from HUD. The lead agency is Janesville, but as part of that agreement, we are allocated 19% of the consortium dollars. And that agreement also indicates that 15% will be allocated to a community housing development organization in Beloit. For 2013, we are estimating that Beloit's share will be $76,935, and that the community housing development organization's share will be $60,738. On October 3rd, the CDA recommended that the city's dollars be used to fund the city's housing rehab revolving loan fund for both owner-occupied and renter-occupied properties. And in terms of the community housing development organization dollars, they recommended they be used for acquisition rehab projects by either NHS or Community Action. That action will formally make that decision in 2013. Actually, you guys will formally make that decision in 2013. The resolution before you awards the city's dollars to the housing rehab revolving loan fund, and then the CHORO dollars, just for acquisition rehab projects in Beloit.
Thank you. Have a motion to approve? Moved by Spritzer. Second by DeForest. Any counselor comments or questions? Hearing none, call the, the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes seven to zero. Item 11C.
A resolution approving the 2013 Business Improvement District Plan and Budget.
Madam Director?
Hi, thank you, guys. I do have a short presentation. I'm not exactly sure where it goes.
Who fills you? Get you out.
That's okay. I can do it without it, if you can't get it up.
Try reopen. Not going to get up that easy, trying to, your first meeting, and you think we're going to let you up that easy. Nah, it's happening. We have all night. Here we go.
Okay.
Maybe we're not... So it's quicker. Suddenly unlocked. All right, there you go, you're good.
Thank you. I do also want to introduce Jason Braun. He's the chairperson. He's here with me tonight for support and to answer any questions you guys might have Some of the things that we've done, I've started in June, so some of the things that we've been doing is kind of going over what our goals and objectives will be for 2013, and kind of modifying the budget to include those things. One of the things that was really important to me was, a lot of the board members and committee members were not really showing much participation. That means showing up at meetings every month and stuff like that. So that's something that we've been trying to focus on. We've also been focusing on connecting with all the businesses in the downtown. As you know, there are quite a few, but we have been taking time to go out and meet with them, get to know what they need from us as an organization that's supposed to be there to assist them, and then trying to assist them with whatever they may need. We are trying to modify our events a little bit, and that just means adding something to every event. It may just be something small, but just trying to refresh it, make it new again, and make it fun for families, which is something that we just did last weekend with our Halloween parade and party. We actually added a fun zone that actually had the toys and stuff for kids to play with, bounce house and that kind of stuff. And then we're trying to add sponsors to every event, and why we're trying to do that is basically to get the fees away from the businesses. Each business that wanted to participate... and we don't want them to have to pay then to participate in an event in downtown. So, we got rid of those. We're also trying to improve our website, and I believe the PowerPoint doesn't show everything, but we are trying to, excuse me, go through and modify our business listings that are on our website, make that a real searchable directory for people that are new to the area, and we're trying to modify a farmer's market directory, so that way any farmer's market vendor can be linked on our website. So, that's all going to take some time, but that's stuff that we're looking to do in 2013. We do have a work plan set up already. We did go through and modify every event, though, and redo the work plan. This is just one page out of the work plan. What we've added this year is we reprioritized a lot of them. A lot of our events were priority one. Obviously, everything in the work plan cannot be a priority one, so the president and myself have went through every priority and reprioritized those. And now for the, the actual budget portion. In your operating plan that was in the packet, you did have a detailed outline of the whole entire budget. I won't go through line by line on that right now, but what I will do is highlight some of the things that I've heard questions of just in passing from different people. Our miscellaneous income actually increased from zero to $12,000, and the reason that that increased is because Rock County 5.0 actually pays me to do some services for them, and I was doing them when I was here working for the city in economic development, and I took those services with me to the DBA. So, they're giving the DBA $12,000, and they're passing on a portion of that to me for my extra work that I do for 5.0. And then, another question that came up was the city services charge, and what that is, is all the DPW stuff that we pay for and the engineering stuff that we get throughout the year is included in that fee. In 2008, I did find an agreement between the, my predecessor and DPW that actually stated that we were supposed to be paying them $4,300, and that was never done. So, we have only been paying them $3,300, so I've corrected that for the 2013 budget. The only other thing that we actually have on our, our budget that's, that's really important is our bid assessment. I have gotten an estimate from the assessor's office, and that is going to be $121,761.60. We are not proposing that we change the bid rate, which currently is at $3.88 per thousand. We do think that that is a good level, and even though we are taking away some of the, the business fees that they're paying us to be in our events, we think that we can still raise enough revenue that we're not going to be losing any money. Any questions in the operating plan or the, yes, very short presentation?
Good. First, do we have a, a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by Vanda Bogart, second by DeForest. And Sheila.
Sean, I just wanted to let you know, I've already heard from several of the downtown businesses that they're excited that you've come in to meet with them, talk to them, so thank you for hitting the ground running and making sure you made those connections right away. I am really excited about your efforts to, to add some sponsors to the events. Some of our businesses downtown are struggling, and so I'm glad that we're looking at ways to kind of help them and not put so much burden on them, so thank you so much for doing that.
No problem.
Councillor Vanda Bogart.
A compliment on the Thanksgiving Parade. I know one young fellow went as some sort of a blue dog. I don't know the character, but I happened to see more Captain Americas and more, all of these costumes, and some of the people gave me feedback that this was the biggest parade that they'd seen in a long, long time, and I know my grandson had a ball. So, it was, it was an excellent effort.
Anything else? All right, then, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go ahead and call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes seven zero. Now, on to item 11D.
A resolution authorizing changes to the 2013 schedule of fees, charges and rates for the city of Beloit, Wisconsin.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. As part of the, excuse me, the budget that you'll be considering this evening, this is a component part of that. We each year include various fee increases that our departments charge for services that they provide. I know you've already discussed some of these with the fire service fees that are being proposed this evening, but in addition to those, the, the resolution includes increases in the fees for our ambulance services that are provided by the fire department. We have quite a number of new fees being proposed, basically from our Parks and Recreation Department for the municipal golf course. They've increased a number of the different passes that they issue each year for the golfers at the golf course. There's also some suggested fee increases for the two cemeteries in, in town and the swimming pool, and looks like some recreation-type services, golf leagues for junior golfers and some summer day camp programs that they have. That's basically it. Be glad to answer any questions you might have concerning any of the proposed fee increases for next year.
We have a motion to approve. Moved by Levy, second by Lukey. Councillor, questions and comments? Councillor DeForest.
Mr. President, I'd like to request that paragraph E is removed from this resolution, please, which relates to fees for fire investigation.
Motion to amend the resolution. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Spriteer. Anybody wish to discuss the, that particular amendment? Okay, go, go ahead and call the amendment, then. All in favor of amending the resolution to strike item E, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item, the, the resolution's been amended. Any other questions or comments on the, Councillor Spriteer?
I guess, question for the city manager, I know we had, you had discussed, mentioned earlier, approving this as written, even though we haven't approved the ordinance changes, and then coming back and changing it. Are we sure that that's the right order to do things, or should we strike B out of this, which seems to be what we're, what we're discussing, that is a new category, and come back and put it in if we pass the ordinance?
Well, certainly, we'd like to get the resolution adopted tonight. We don't like to act on the final ordinance resolution without all the pieces in place. If we pull all of those out, then we have to prepare a whole nother separate resolution. I guess my preference would be to go ahead and act on the ordinance as amended, paragraph E removed. If you end up voting in the affirmative on the other changes to fire fees, then we won't need to revisit the resolution at all. And if we need to change it to amend it later, we could always do that. Okay, I think I'd rather do that than, in other words, only amend it if the ordinance fails, rather than have to amend it and rewrite it for sure. Because this doesn't go into effect until January 1st, so there's plenty of time to consider the ordinance, and if we have to, we can always double back and amend the resolution.
Any other questions? All right, then, hearing no other questions, so call the, call the underlying motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes seven zero, as amended. And finally, item 11E.
A resolution approving the operating budgets appropriating funds and levying property taxes necessary for the operation and administration of the city of Beloit for the year 2013, including the 2013 capital improvement budget, the Beloit Public Library budget, and further authorizing the city treasurer to spread the city property tax along with the apportionment certified for other jurisdictions upon the current tax roll of the city.
Mr. York.
Thank you. This is the, I guess, the grand finale for the budget for, for 2013. This is the resolution that the council will consider for approval to adopt all the operating and capital budgets that have been proposed and discussed for, for next fiscal year. And we do have a brief PowerPoint that we want to go through some of the modifications that have taken place since the budget was originally proposed by the council approximately one month ago. Since then, we have had a all-day workshop with the council to discuss the proposed budget. We've also had a public hearing on the budget, and we have incorporated the changes that have been discussed at these various meetings with the, the budget that was originally proposed. As we stand today, the total budget for the city for next year would be a little bit over $91,000, $91 million, excuse me. It's actually a decrease over the current year budget of a little bit over $900,000, a little bit more than 1%. The general fund portion of the budget for next year would actually increase about almost 3%, 2.9%, $870,000. And as you can see, the, the big change for the operating budgets is the decrease in the debt service budget. We discussed that a few times during former presentations, and that's largely the result of some refundings that the city has done in the last couple of years, that we've refunded outstanding debt at a lesser interest rate that's resulted in, in savings, as well as the retirement of some of the outstanding debt. This is the general fund portion of the budget, and what this slide shows you are the changes that have occurred since the budget was originally proposed, and as you can see, there's a net increase of just a little bit over $9,500 in the general fund budget since it was proposed a month ago. And most of these are as a result of the decisions that have been made for the, for example, the, the Community Development Department, the $18,000 change that, that's occurring there is largely because of reallocation of salaries within that department due to some HUD reporting requirements that we're, we're meeting now. It's allocating more expense to the general fund that was formerly charged to the Community Development Block Grant program. HUD felt like that we were charging too much to block grant that was not being justified. There's a couple of changes in police and fire, and that was as a result of decreased in retiree health benefits. We budgeted an increase in those for next year, and we got final numbers from our insurer and found out that those premiums were not going to increase, so we backed out those increases that we had budgeted. So, that's the reason for those changes there. But, again, overall, the, the net change in the general fund is less than $10,000 for next year. This just sort of runs down the details of what some of these are. We did get some final numbers from the state on the transportation aids that we expect to receive next year, and that was a little bit over $9,000 less than what we anticipated. And again, the $18,000 is the reduction in our fund balance that we originally had in there due to the retiree health benefit change. One change, it's in the police department. We're reallocating some funds that we had set aside for the animal control services for next year. We originally had those all contained in a contractual service account, and now that the decision's been made to go with city staff for animal, animal control services, we've reallocated $125,000 of the 250 that we had in there for contractual services and set up in our salary accounts sufficient funds to cover one additional full-time employee, a CSO, and converting one of our part-time employees we have in the police department currently to a full-time position. And that's the result of these changes that you see here for animal control. And again, in the fire department, the post-65 retiree health savings that we just mentioned. And then the Community Development Department, this was really just, again, a reallocation of salary costs is what this change is for. We do have a modification in the Parks Department. One of our longtime senior employees, John Calkurtz, who runs our senior center, is retiring at the end of this year, and we will realize some savings with the replacement of John, and we've decided to reallocate some of that savings to some of our seasonal hires that we make each year to maintain our Parks programs. You may recall this change that we discussed a few weeks ago. We are removing $100,000 from our street maintenance capital improvements account to the Pullman Field account in the CIP for next year to cover the cost of the replacement of the outfield sod and some other improvements that we're making to Pullman Field this year to benefit the Snappers baseball program. And we're actually recouping the $100,000 that we're spending this year in the 2013 budget, and that's what this change is for in the CIP for next year. There is one change in our enterprise funds for next year, and this is really to properly account for some changes that we've made to some staffing out there. There's some laboratory positions in our wastewater treatment facility that wasn't included in the original proposed budget. These happened just within the last few months, and we want to make sure the budget for 2013 reflects the proper staffing plan that we have in place for that particular operation. And the net result is an increase in the water pollution control or the sewer fund budget of about $53,000 as a result of these staffing changes. And that's the, basically for a lab tech position that was added at the wastewater And with that, that concludes the PowerPoint and the changes that have been made to the budget, and I'll be glad to answer any questions the council may have regarding the budget.
A motion for approval?
Motion for approval, second.
Moved by Lukey, second by Vanda Bogart. And we'll start with councillor DeForest.
I, I have a comment. I, after the budget that we passed last year, I, I was assured by my colleagues that, that there was a priority to obtain minimum manning to a, a safety standard that is, is, is uniform standard for our city size, and I was told that and encouraged to continue to support last year's budget contingent on waiting to see what would happen with negotiations, and then also to see what would happen with a grant proposal that was pending. And I was promised at that point that if I would let things unwind and let those things work out themselves, that if those were not successful in returning to our 15 minimum manning for our EMTs, that we would revisit it, and that has not been done. And given that, what I feel is a break of a, a promise, a gentleman's agreement that was made, I cannot support this budget. We have not revisited the minimum manning staffing, irregardless of what my colleagues have said about how concerned they are about it, nothing has been done to address it, and so I cannot in good faith sleep at night and pass a budget again that takes us to a level that I don't feel is safe for our residents. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councillor Vanda Bogart.
I would have a couple of questions of Mr. York. First, I assume-
has been done to address it. And so, I cannot in good faith sleep at night and pass a budget again that takes us to a level that I don't feel is safe for our residents. Thank you.
Anybody else? Counselor Van de Bogart.
I would have a couple of questions, Mr. York. First, I assume that our earlier discussion at either the day-long workshop or one of them about having to worry about expenditure restraint limits has been met so that we do, in fact, meet those limits, and we will qualify for expenditure restraint dollars.
Correct.
The second question would be, I would also assume that although we are using some fund balance, about $600,000, if I recall, that is going to leave our fund balance, first of all, within ordinance parameters, and also that it will continue to be sufficiently robust that any rating agencies, if we have to borrow money, will be placated, happy, ecstatic, I don't know what the action verb would be, with the amount that's there.
Well, we're using exactly $589,000 in fund balance for the general fund, and we feel that, and we are within our policy limitations, so we feel that that's not going to jeopardize us in any way with the rating agencies. We are meeting our policy, and we do have sufficient reserves on hand, and so the $589 should not be an issue for us.
Thank you.
Counselor Lukey.
I'd like to respond to Counselor DeForest Davis. I want it made very clear that the entire council has had as a priority, and that's all seven members of the council, to get the fire department back to the 15 person. We all feel very strongly about that, and we had hoped that the grant or grants would do that. But I'd like to ask the council, or at least to think about where she would have cut or had taxes added for the people of Beloit. I think we would have all wanted in the greatest fashion to have that 15, but I'd like to ask where that money would have come from.
Let's make sure that's a rhetorical question right now.
I'll leave it at that.
Any other council questions or comments? All right, then. All in favor of calling or calling the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, item passes six, one. Item 12, adjournment.
Move to adjourn, Mr. President.
Moved by Van de Bogart, second by Levy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Yeah. Well.
Rest your voice.
No.